Five years of service, and we hereby present this certificate. I don't know, do we have Bo with us this morning or not?
I don't believe so.
All right. Bo has been a right-hand guy for Lucas, and we enjoy having him, so. Thank you for being a part of the county these last five years, Bo. Here's a certificate of appreciation for a gentleman named Kent Hayes. Served Marshall County as a truck driver three, and we're extending an expression of appreciation for five years of service. We hereby present this certificate to you, Kent. Is Kent or Paul on with us this morning? No, all right. We have a certificate of appreciation this morning for Stephanie Colter. Served Marshall County as an administrative assistant, and we're extending an expression of appreciation for her five years of service. And do we have Stephanie with us this morning? Doesn't look like it. And I believe Stephanie.
She is joined in, she probably just can't speak. We saw a thumbs up come from her, it looks like.
Okay, all right.
Go give her the damn thumbs up back.
Thank you for your service, Stephanie. Stephanie is with the Attorney's Office, Marshall County Attorney's Office, and she was here before this five-year service that we're showing appreciation for now. And do you know what department she was in the first time she was with the county?
I don't.
No, okay.
But, but yeah, so she's got, I think, ten years in, had five left for a time and then came back. And we don't do rehires giving prior service here at the county, so.
And what was your comment, that she made some poor life choices in leaving the county?
Okay, Stephanie will find me now, walking in and out of the building.
Thank you, Stephanie, we appreciate your work with us.
Did you get the license plate of that bus?
It's red, it's a red license plate.
Okay. Consent agenda, number three, approved minutes from regular session on September 1, 2020. Number four, appointment commencing July 1, 2020. Marshall County Compensation Board, Doug Beals, auditor and recorder, Representative Tom Schwartz, Treasurer, representative for a four-year term. Number five, accept annual manure management plan update, P A G L C, ID number 59611. Annual update received and placed on file with the following change to the manure management plan, four-year update. Number six, accept the annual manure management plan update, Edler Brothers Farm, section thirteen, ID number 62427. Annual update received and placed on file with no changes to the manure management plan. Number seven, accept the annual manure management plan update, M D H Finisher's, ID number 62120. Annual update received and placed on file with no change to the manure management plan. Number eight, record, approve claims. Approved claims is audited and authorized the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the month of September will be published as part of the first meeting in October.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Chairman, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. If there's no discussion, roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. Motion passes.
And I want to interrupt, I did learn that Steph Colter worked in the auditor recorder's office.
The auditor recorder's office, all right.
So.
Yeah, very good. Number nine, approve personnel action, hire Joshua Gonzalez, Sheriff's Office, full-time jailer, rate of pay at nineteen forty-one an hour, effective September 16th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to hire Joshua Gonzalez, Sheriff's Office, full-time jailer, rate of pay nineteen dollars and forty-one cents per hour, effective September 16th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Joshua Gonzalez as jailer, rate of pay at nineteen forty-one an hour. Any other discussion on this? Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Very good, motion passes. Number 10, Teamsters Local 238, discussion of possible action of Teamsters grievance regarding vacation.
Have we had Michael call in yet?
No, we're.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you.
He's good.
Mike, I couldn't get my Zoom link working, so I just called in.
Okay, Mike, do we need to go into closed session on this?
No, there's no closed session at this point because it's not a matter that's specific to protected personnel matter. This is really a leave issue kind of a contract interpretation grievance.
Okay, I didn't know if we need to offer the individual the option or not, so as long as you say no, I'm good with that.
No, and quite honestly, I will ask, and obviously, the board has to take consideration, and I'll give a brief description. Obviously, the union can pursue our arbitration if they choose to, so I don't want to discuss, it's really not in litigation yet, but if it were to, I'd ask the board that, I'm not trying to be, not answer all questions, but I don't want to reveal any strategy that we may have, but I'll give you the basics of the grievance, what my recommendation is at this point, and then we will go on from there. And the process right now is, as we, the sheriff, Dave Thompson, myself, met with the union reps pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement at the appropriate step of the grievance process for the union to present reasons that the grievance should be overturned, or the denial by the sheriff that the board would overturn that denial. The basics of the grievance have to do with a staffing issue, and there's language in the current collective bargaining agreement under either sixteen point five or seventeen point five, depending on which contract from which date you're using, but the language has not changed. And that language talks about, it says, "No more than four jailers may be gone at the same time, whether for vacation or compensatory time off unless otherwise authorized by the sheriff or the designee." The position brought forward by the union is that that language requires at least four jailers can be off on vacation or comp time. As I explained to the union when we had the grievance meeting, I think that that's not the accurate interpretation of that language. It says, "No more than four jailers," and then leaves discretion to the sheriff or his or her designee to make that determination. What we have, as the board may be aware or not, we have other issues where people are off on military leave or FMLA leave or other leaves, maybe sick leave, that is uncontrollable by the employer, and obviously, as the board can understand, we have to be able to staff the facility. The sheriff has conveyed to Dave and I that they do everything in their power to get the people the time off, and to their knowledge, I believe this was stated, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, that people aren't losing vacation time. But what's happening is, is sometimes a day that you really want, you're not going to be able to get because we need to meet certain staffing levels as determined by the employer or as determined by the sheriff in this case, which is obviously crucial in a jail setting or in a public safety setting. So if you look at the definition of "no more than," and you can actually Google it and it'll bring you to Merriam-Webster Dictionary, and the idea is, is that is not a must, that is up to. So if we only approve less than that, we're still within the, in my opinion, the rights of the employer. I think there's also a history that in certain situations, we've not been able to always, meet that timeframe or that number of people off. So we had these discussions, we also talked about the history of this. This language is, probably predates me, probably, which would be a long time, and I think it predates Sheriff Hoffman, and so it's clear to me that it would have been something back years ago that was put in the contract, and it's odd to me that we've never had an issue before. There's similar language for the deputies, but that wasn't part of this grievance because it doesn't seem to be an issue for the deputies. So based on my interpretation of the language of the contract, I'm recommending to the board that we stay consistent with what the sheriff did in the previous step of the grievance process where he denied the grievance, I would recommend to the board that they deny the grievance and direct me to submit a written response to the union, consistent with my understanding and my position that I, someone outlined here today, I don't want to go into all of the details, but it's basically a denial of the grievance. The next step, if the board takes my recommendation and supports it, the onus then goes back to the union to determine whether they want to submit this to a grievance arbitration, and if we go down that road, I can explain to the board what those steps are. Then we will be going into closed sessions because an administrative action such as an arbitration is considered litigation, and we would be able to go into a closed session under threatened or imminent litigation. So with that, I'll shut up at this point and let the board ask me any questions that they may have.
Thank you, Mike.
I was there, so I have no further questions, okay. I don't, I don't. Based upon that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to motion that we deny the grievance and direct our attorney, Michael Galway, to send a written letter of response back to the union and the individual that filed the grievance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the grievance. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Michael, you've got your marching orders.
Number 11, resolution by Marshall County to opt out of deferring the payment of employee social security tax due to this being, due to this being a deferment rather than a tax break, and a Marshall County may be liable for repaying for anyone who leaves county employment before the repayment is complete. Now therefore being resolved, Marshall County will opt out of the presidential directive to defer the payment of employee social security tax from September through December 2020 to January through April 2021.
And one of the reasons many of the counties are doing this is the payroll systems do not handle this, and so it becomes a very manual process for us to defer it and then have it be deducted at a later time.
It has to be paid regardless.
It has to be paid, and then the problem is, like was noted in that paragraph, if someone leaves, we are liable for both halves then.
Oh.
So. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we adopt resolution number 2020 dash zero zero two eight.
Zero seconds.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2020 dash zero zero two eight. Do we have other discussion? Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 12, resolution number 2020 zero zero two nine, abatement of real estate taxes. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 445 dot sixteen, Code of Iowa, the county treasurer has the authority to determine when it is impractical to pursue collection of property taxes through the tax sale or lawsuit remedies. Whereas upon making this determination, the county treasurer shall provide a recommendation of abatement to the board of supervisors, and the board shall abate the following taxes. 908 South Sixth Avenue, Marshawn, Iowa, parcel number eight four one eight dash thirty-five dash four seventy-nine dash zero zero five for current and delinquent taxes during the 2016 through 2019 property tax years in the amount of three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars, which includes penalty, interest, and costs. The next property is 402 North Third Avenue, Marshawn Town, Iowa, parcel number eight four one eight dash twenty-six dash four oh three dash zero three zero for current and delinquent taxes during the 2017, 2019 property tax years in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, which includes penalty, interest, and costs. Now therefore be resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the amount due be abated and the county treasurer is directed to strike the amounts due from the county system.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt resolution 2020 dash zero zero two nine, and there is all by the Marsh County Board of Supervisors that the amount due be abated, and the county treasurer is directed to strike the amounts due from the county system.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to abate resolution number 2020, not abate, adopt, 2020 dash zero zero two nine, abatement of taxes. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Chairman, this is Jared Heil, the treasurer. Both of these parcels are the city of Marshalltowns, which they're getting under the Iowa Code 657A point one zero B, and what that is, is they're abandoned as part of the properties that the city's cleaning up, and under that section five, basically says that they get it clear, so we have to abate additionally on that first one, 908 South Sixth Ave. We're supposed to, there's a tax sale on it, so we're supposed to back that tax sale out, pay the tax on investor back and abate. So that's what the code's telling us to do on these two. I do know a lot of times you guys want to know what's the original county portion amount on that 908 South Sixth Avenue, it's three hundred thirty-one, and 402 North Third Ave, the originally county portion was three hundred seventy-eight.
Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
Are these properties, are these properties being removed, the buildings, or what's?
I don't know for certain what the city has, I know a lot of times what they do when they're doing these, they're, they do a demolition and then they get it back on the property tax rolls, but I don't know if demolition's necessary on these or not.
Okay, thank you. I have just run out of battery on my laptop. Meeting's over.
All right, you had a motion of a second on the floor to adopt.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 13, approval of lease agreement, discussion of possible action to approve a lease agreement between Marshall County, Iowa, and David and Kathy Thompson. This lease agreement is for temporary space for Marshall County Elections in the Old Fire Station, 107 South First Avenue, Marshawn Town, Iowa, and 109 South First Avenue, Marshawn Town, Iowa. This space will be used as the Marshall County Election Center for the general election beginning nine fifteen of 2020.
Okay, Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this, and you can second it.
Okay.
If you desire.
Absolutely.
I move to approve the lease agreement between Marshall County, Iowa, and David and Kathy Thompson for the use of Marshall County Elections.
And I would second that.
And just so the public knows, this lease agreement is for the cost of one dollar. The reason it has to be a dollar is so that all the insurance can be taken care of properly, so it's more of an administrative hassle than anything else, but it makes everything correct, and we appreciate, because of the transfer process of David and Kathy's donation to the county, you know, it always seems like real estate things never go as quickly as we want them to because there's always, it just takes longer than we think. So this takes care of us, and at this point, Dave is actually letting us use both sides of the building, both 107 and 109, so we were in 109 for the primary election, but we're going to have both 107 and 109 so that he will be vacant of the building just because it is the election center. Other than maybe some storage and that type of thing, in those back, because we're not using those back stalls that are west.
My only, our only concern is, we've been given keys to the building now, and we also know the code to that back door. Because this is an election, and you need it completely secured and without question, and I feel, no matter who wins this next election, that it will be challenged. We would appreciate it if the security was changed and we don't have access to anything.
The keys for the south side, the 109, we would like those back in case we needed to use that space. We will rekey the office space with keys that you do not have. And that will be where everything is secure. The other space we'll be using for public voting, it'll have voting booths, tables, nothing of value, it will not have the ballots, it will not have any of that type of information.
That's just to protect us, so that if there is any questions on the validity of this next election, regardless of what happens, we don't want to get caught up in it in any way, shape, or form.
Nor do I as the auditor, we want it to just be clean. So it'll be, we will be rekeying that office space on something that you've never had a key in your hand.
Thank you.
So the other side, if we use it, it'll be more for back-of-house workers, maybe entering things and computers, that type of thing.
This lease was for a dollar, I understand.
A dollar.
Did we negotiate any with that at all, could it have been fifty cents and still
We didn't want anything, and she said she.
I have to do a dollar, and he needs to cash it.
Has to be a dollar.
Yeah, and we're also taking care of that large yard area there, that patch of grass that's about the size of two tables here, and there's some bushes there between the sidewalks that we're going to take out because they go over into the sidewalk and they're kind of a security issue, safety.
One steak in the ground and a short rope and a goat will take care of that.
Would the city allow that? Is that a possibility?
Well, they allow chickens, let's put chickens here.
I don't like chickens.
Bring that up on the next board meeting.
This is like herding cats.
It is, it really is.
I, I'm interested in a roll call vote here at this point, how about that?
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
I must abstain.
Motion passes. Again, thank you to the Thompson family.
Yes.
Everything.
No problem.
You have done here. Number 14, extension for waiving member cost share for COVID-19 treatment, discussion of possible action to approve the extension of the Marshall County Medical Benefits Plan, Plan's ability to waive all co-pays, co-insurance, and deductibles for an in-network provider care for members' treatment of COVID-19 to 1231 of 2020.
Just so you all know, this is just an extension, you approved this once before, but the, shockingly, it seems like you didn't approve that that long ago, and September 30th is knocking at our door, and so we'd like to extend this. A lot of the things we're working on, I'm working on the CARES application right now, the FEMA things for COVID, everything right now is going through December 31st. That's kind of the magic date right now, now, not to say that couldn't change down the road, but right now, that's the date everything is kind of using.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve the extension to the Marshall County Medical Benefit Plan, ability to waive all co-pays, co-insurance, and deductibles for all in-network provider care for members' treatment of COVID-19, which comes from our health plan, and extending it to 1231 of 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the Marshall County Medical Benefit Plan ability to waive all co-pays, co-insurance, and deductibles. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 15, approve Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission meeting forms, discussion of possible action to approve time and travel forms for Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve a time and, whoops, I can't, I was thinking ahead too much.
No, that's fine, no. Do we, we need a motion on this?
Okay, then, then I will, my mind is thinking about several things here. I'm sorry. I move to approve the time and travel forms for Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the time and travel time forms for Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission Meetings.
Now, I want to explain that a little bit more, though, for the people who are listening. That's still a non-paid job.
Right.
And this allows, allows people who travel, who spend the time to do this, to put it down in their income tax as an expense.
There's no money actually changing hands here, is there?
No, it's still a volunteer.
On their taxes.
It's still a volunteer job, and we really do appreciate.
Boy, do we have.
All the fine people that we do get who say they'll volunteer their time, and that's true.
We have a couple of different instances that this will join with our other county policies. Within the Conservation Department, Mike Stegman has a form for people that take care of some of our parks that are in the rural communities and the small communities. If somebody maintains that park and mows it, he's got a form that can be filled out which they can claim the amount of hours and expense that they had. They do not get reimbursed by the county, however, it's a form that allows them to claim that as deduction on their income tax, and this would be exactly the same thing.
This is a good thing.
Yep, very good thing.
All right, if there's no other comments, roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 16, retirement gift policy, discussion of possible action to approve a gift retirement policy. Who would like to speak on this?
Me.
This is kind of a follow-up to a previous claim that was denied in a previous meeting and a follow-up to our audit from last year. Beth Miller said if we got a policy on this type of thing, that it could be an allowed expense, but because last year we didn't have it, it wasn't an allowed expense to allow for a, this is a recognition plaque for somebody that's retired, the item in question, and kind of something for going on down the road, if that's something we want to be able to do, establishing this policy.
Lisa and I and Mary Stubbs worked on this about a week and a half ago, and we're just bringing this to the supervisors now to address and approve if possible.
I think the policy is good, I think it's necessary to alleviate any questions that make them up in the future. I'm wondering if we want to put a dollar amount in on it?
That's something that you.
You know, to.
Decide.
Put a limit on what can be spent?
I have no problem with that, I just, once you do that, and then sometime down the road, when there, as life changes, then the next supervisor will say, gee, that's not enough, and they'll have to change it at that time.
I understand your point.
Yeah, but it'll be after you're.
Gone.
Right.
Retired.
Retired, yes.
That's the job of the supervisors, is to set policy. Is that something we want to do to muddy, muddy the waters or just leave it be?
I would waive it too. I'm just one of three.
I agree with you, I think it needs to be a little bit open-ended there to keep up with the times, cost of living and so forth.
My question would be, is there a number that is a point where it would cost conservative? Like, if you said like five hundred dollars, maybe.
That would be excessive.
A lot of lead, right, but you know, if you come into an instance like that, where somebody says, "Watch, through a big party, it costs five hundred dollars."
Well, no, this isn't for a party, this is just for.
A recognition.
This is for a recognition.
Again.
Yeah, there's.
For a plaque.
Any, any banquets or get-together of a potluck or anything, that would have to be not reimbursable through taxpayers' expense, but a recognition of a plaque or years of service that we do on a monthly basis, that would be included on this.
That was one other thing that we looked at on that was, did you want to be specific on, you know, have it be a plaque or some sort of recognition specific along those lines?
My intention was to leave it open.
Yeah. Maybe just a moment. Maybe just a memento.
Yeah, some, some, because some people, you might want to get a picture of the courthouse versus a plaque, you know.
This would be up to the department heads to make a decision on those kind of. Do I need to read the draft? And it sounds like maybe we're not changing yet at this point, is that fair to say? Retirement and recognition gifts. Recognizing an employee's dedication to serving the community and commitment to the county serves a public purpose for honoring individuals with a token gift or honorarium in recognition of their service. The same is true for individual awards, mementos, or items purchased in recognition of employee service to the county. These purchases may be used, may use public funds, provided the expenditures are modest and approved by the department head.
And you know the term modest should cover?
I, I'd like to think so too, yes.
Common sense?
Yes.
Modest is a, is a pretty accurate word.
So I think we've, we've covered this. I think it's, it's a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion to approve the retirement gift policy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the retirement gift policy. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solace.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I just want to ask for clarification, so that would be a gift policy from September 15th forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to discussion only items. Number 17, door, door monitor at the Great Western Bank for county offices. Continue to have the door monitor at the bank for county offices and for how long? Nan, I think you have something you want to say about that.
Yes, we have been using election workers to cover the door and we are starting having workers do general election. We have figured out how to cover the space through September 30th, which is when the last day property taxes are supposed to be due. Jared wanted to see if, last I talked to Jared, he didn't think they would be extended. So I don't know if that has changed, but all I can really do is September 30th. If we need to go further than that, we're going to need to find some different people and I don't have the staff to work on that scheduling. I've, we spend a lot of hours in our department scheduling that.
Well, if you can do it till September 30th, you will have the taxes paid.
The taxes will be done, so, and it's also another end of month. We've noticed end of month is very busy time as well. Jared has talked to the bank and they've been gracious enough on those end of month or really late times to allow anybody that's in the door by 4:30 to be able to process as long as we're out of the building by 5:00, which has worked out very nicely. It's, we were having to lock the door before 4:30 because the lines were so long there part of the time. So that's worked out very nicely when we do have those really long lines, which I anticipate we will have again at September 30th timeframe, if not before. So I will tell you that we had somebody that couldn't work at the door, you know, and I had them. Have you been exposed the last 14 days? Yes. Did you have a test? No, I'm quarantining.
Here at the county?
In front of me, yeah. So there's a reason that I don't work the door any more than I do and that individual was not allowed in. He did ask to see someone else. That didn't go well. He did come back a week later when Jill was working and he said there was not a very nice lady that didn't let him in the prior week, so.
Did you, at that time, go out and discuss that with her?
Well, she just chuckled and, because she knew who it was and knew the story. But he got his business taken care of and it wasn't late because he had 30 days to do his, you know, get his title for his new vehicle and get the plates, so it was all good. I checked with the Ann. But we do run the risk, people probably won't wear face masks. We can still keep the supply out there for people to pick one up. We can have the signage. Jeannie said she can make a great big sign that says mask required, but there will be people not wearing them. You know, that's just going to be probably a risk we have. I have, I'm probably, we've got face shields for my staff that are in offices. If they feel like there's a lot of people out there, they may wear a mask and shield by going to the restroom and that type of thing. I feel pretty good about our staff that's behind those plexiglasses. They, I feel like they're, you know, really pretty, pretty protected. It's when you're going out to the restrooms or maybe back in the back room for a break type of thing. So Jared, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah. Yeah, as for any property tax deadline extensions, I don't anticipate that there will be one, but if there would be, it'd be like what they did during, with the COVID extensions, it'll be like that last week. And by then, the bulk of the payments will be in or a very high percentage of them. So if a deadline extension occurs, I don't think we need to have a door person be on September 30th because it's, we're going to have so many of the payments done that you're not going to have a mad dash later in the next month, causing any lines or difficulty people getting in and out. So, but even with that said, I really doubt that there will be an extension, but if there would be, I think we would still be fine cutting off the door person with the last day with September 30th. I think it's gone very well and I, and I think for the most part, you know, people have been very understanding and they would be very understanding to seeing the markings on the floor of where to stand once we go to no door person directing. I think people are most cognizant of that right now and respectful to it and, you know, you always have a few outliers and, and I think everyone knows how to handle those professionally, so. But all in all, I think the process is gone as well as is possible. And I think the bank downstairs just opened yesterday, I believe. Is that, is that correct, Nan?
Yes, Mary Lee just sent me an email regarding that and I, I do want to say publicly, the bank was very nice about sending us flowers when we opened, kind of encouraging us, and they did come up right away and see how it was going, you know, see how things work. So very exciting that the bank is now open. They are not entering though from the north door. I think they just have the east door open and that is their handicap door with the ramp. So they're trying to, we don't have an issue then with that west door, people coming up both sets of stairs because they're really trying to control their traffic somewhat.
Yes, and then that works well. Alice was telling me about how, you know, this north parking would work well for county customers and then the east lot, east side of the bank works well for their customers. So it kind of, it helps separate the appropriate social distancing between bank and, and county customers and, and I think it'll work very well.
All right, so we have an understanding here at this point then, it sounds like.
Through September 30th.
Through September 30th and after that, we're going to.
Try the, just.
And I'd like to put a lot of faith in our patrons of Marshall County here.
And there will always be, you know, a few, but really generally, people have been very good and gracious about it. They understand the Xs on the floor, you know, where to stand and to make that distancing. You know, most, most people, I'd say 98% of them do a great job.
Good to hear. All right, well, we have a plan for.
We have a plan.
The door. All right, we'll move on to number 18, discussion item only again. This involves the Board of Supervisors meetings. I guess the question is proposed that continue to have the Board of Supervisors meeting via Zoom only or C about Great Western Bank basement plus Zoom?
So I'm seeing a lot of chatter from other county auditors, you know, on this topic and just kind of wanted to get the thoughts from you all. I believe the city is still limiting to 17 patrons coming in. We did election training downstairs. I think we could get at least 20. We had 20 people there with the chairs spaced out six foot distance, so we could do something like that. Still have the Zoom option as well and so patrons would have either choice.
Honestly, I don't mind the Zoom and quite frankly, in the years I've been in office, we've had more public participation with closed meetings and the option of Zoom that people can participate no matter what time or where they're at than ever before.
I'm not saying, I like the Zoom. I want to keep doing the Zoom and maybe keep doing the Zoom forever. I think it's a great option.
I think it's fantastic and, you know, I've seen more participation from the public than ever before.
We've got a nice list today.
You know, it's, it really.
It is. I, I love it.
Yep. People don't want to travel, they can monitor, it's on our website.
It saves them a lot of time as well because they don't have to spend the time driving. But if patrons do want to be there, you know, in person to allow that option, I just wanted to get your thoughts on if that's something we should look at down the road. We'd have to do some work to set it up. We have this owl thing here. The owl is very successful. We'd have to get another owl, so it, it isn't like we could do this the 29th. Maybe we could, but, you know, we've got some technology we need to get purchased and so I just wanted to kind of feel you all out on if this is a direction you want us to go. I think at some point we're going to have to anyway, but like Dave said, I don't think we ever maybe really want to get rid of the Zoom option.
Personally for right now, I'd like to just stick with what we're doing.
Okay.
I would prefer.
Okay.
Well, you know, if, if we're concerned for all our other employees and, and the rest of that, I think we need to share the same concern for, for us.
Well, and if I, if we did that, there'd also probably be, we'd have to get some plexiglass in place down there is kind of my other thought. You know, so that's why I'm saying, if you said yes, I couldn't imagine this happening before a month, just with everything that I would see we would want to do for the safety of our employees. So I'll kind of start doing a little research and we, can we leave it on and discuss it again next meeting and I can get kind of some.
The next meeting?
Yeah, we'll discuss it the 29th again. We won't do anything but just discuss it again and I'll do a little research on maybe how we could set the room up and how many people we could get in. Because I, I really want, in this room, we're very separated here. We're all six foot apart. I like that. And I want us to be also six foot apart in the basement the same way. So set up the tables so we're very spaced out.
I'd like to address it again here, at least within a month.
Okay.
Let's do it a month.
All right.
Yeah, do it two meetings from now.
Two meetings from now. I, I think there's some value in face to face.
There is, and some people like that, but I, I think the Zoom thing, just for travel and things, I don't want to lose that.
Let's, let's.
I like, like Dave said, we, we get more people listening and attending this way.
We do.
You know, in the past, we've always had it available on our website for live streaming and, and for YouTube, but with Zoom, the ability to have that interaction without people traveling, I think is extremely valuable.
Yep.
Good government requires active participation.
Very true.
October 13th meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a.
Fall is going quicker.
Number 19, 2020 census to conclude September 30th of 2020. And Lisa, you're up to bat.
Yes, you'll notice on the agenda this time, we don't have all the numbers that I normally have and that's because the census has gone more, more from just the local county, looking at the local county response rate to more of an overall state response because they have incorporated the door-to-door census takers helping out. And so what they're doing now is they're giving us a daily count that includes not only the self-response rate, but what they call the non-response follow-up completion rate. And that's those door-to-door census takers going and, and getting people to complete their census. So, so when you look at what I have on the agenda today, it's that self-response rate that we have currently in Iowa at 70.3% with the additional door-to-door completion rate of 16.4%. That's how you get that total household completion rate of 86.7. So that's where we stand in Iowa right now, with 86.7% complete.
I have different numbers.
You do?
This one.
These were as of last Friday.
I got 87.5.
I do too.
Oh, I'm looking at my old agenda. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, here. Okay, thank you. I updated. I'm sorry.
It's my tablet's fault.
So, okay, so when I got them on Friday, they had moved up to 70.4% in the self-response and then they moved up to 17.1 in the non-response and then the total house, household completion rate was 87.5. I'd actually still have my Thursday numbers on my old agenda. These are Friday numbers and they change every day at 3:00 PM. So that's where we're at. Countywide, we're just, we've gone up a little bit, 0.9% as of last Friday in the self-response rate. That's the only Marshall County number I gave you this time because like I said, they're looking at the overall state completion rates and I would expect, as their plan is, this is to, to wrap up September 30th still, unless they come out with a delay. But at this point, it's still the 30th.
What happens when this is completed and we're only at 90% of what our potential is? Is that just our loss then as a county?
When I asked that question of John when he was here helping us, because I said, "How did that work out in 2010? Did you get that 100%? You know, does that happen?" And he said, "We tried very hard to do that." So he didn't elaborate further as to, you know, if we don't make that 100%, you know, what happens? He indicated like they made 100%. So one goes past that 30th deadline or not, I don't know.
Did I look like that?
You did. You got a lot on your face.
I'm sorry.
The gentleman that's Larry is out now on second floor.
He seems to be busy.
He, he does. I see people there and he's very gracious when one of our door workers needs to take a break, he asks the security questions and hands out the mask.
He does.
He's so helpful.
He is a nice, but he's, people, he's very trusting and he explains it very nicely. I've listened to him about your information is not shared, this is secure, and he's getting people there. He's very busy.
Yep. So I would, I would assume my last report will be on the September 29th meeting, which will be the one day before this all ends. And, you know, hopefully that total household completion rate will be in the 90%. And it might be today because those numbers that I gave, gave here were actually Friday's numbers, so, and it goes up every day.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa.
You bet.
All right, we're going to move on to public forum. It's a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Would anyone like to speak?
I have an update. This is Kim with Emergency Management.
Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to let everybody know that I was just out with FEMA, their setup in a non-traditional way for a disaster recovery center. Usually we have an indoor where people can go visit with them, but with COVID, we all know everything's changed, so they are located behind the VA clinic so people can drive up. They drive behind that building, drive up, either hand in paperwork for their individual assistance or they can pick up the paperwork that they need. They can scan in your documents that are needed for applying and it seems to be working pretty smooth. They already had a few lined up there this morning. They'll operate Monday through Saturday, 9 to 6, and they are, are there for a limited time. They won't say exactly date-wise, but I encourage people to go out if they, they want to apply for individual assistance. There's not a, a, an income level that you have to be at. Anyone that had damages or losses through the duration can, can apply, so they can guide you through that process pretty easily and you don't have to leave your car. So again, it seems to be working out pretty well. again, it seems to be working out pretty well already this morning.
Very good. Thank you, Kim. I was by there about nine thirty yesterday morning and there was quite a lineup of cars there. I was surprised. I didn't know that was happening there. Looked like things were going smoothly in the road.
Yep, yep. They were just getting everything set up and they started officially this morning. So, yeah, they have quite the crew there and, um, me, news media was already there this morning from W H O. So, the, the word's getting out. Um, it has been, I think it was in the paper this morning on the T R and it's out on social media being shared quite a bit. So, um, just encouraging people to get out there. I'm working with D H S to get their, what's called D-Snap. It's emergency, um, food dollars that will be coming through and I'm hoping that they get set up in the next week to week and a half. Again, with COVID, it's been a challenge to get a, a spot for them to do it in a non-traditional way. So, so up for that, for that information to come out pretty soon too.
All right. Very good.
And I'd like to, so Kim just talked about individual assistance and as far as FEMA public assistance, the county has applied for both the COVID FEMA assistance and the DRAESHO FEMA assistance. That is done. It's just an application process. As of last Friday, I applied for CARES funding for the election. That will give us up to twenty-two thousand dollars for the general election for COVID-related items. We're gonna need a whole lot more, um, plexiglass, um, shields for the, um, workers to stay behind, um, at the tables and that type of thing. So that will help us with that. The plexiglass is, um, it's not cheap, to put it mildly. The CARES, um, the first round of the CARES funding, uh, request with the state for Marshall County for March first through July 31st is due today. Yes, that's what I'm working on right now. So we're, um, we get a, um, there's a big chunk of money that the governor has, um, put towards the counties. And, um, we're working on, um, ways to get that. We've done a lot of purchase of Zoom computers. I purchased some, um, election equipment that I know I'm not going to have the funds in my, twenty-two thousand and the CARES fund for the county will take care of that as well. So I've been talking to James and Jennifer. Um, I talked to the sheriff. He has some JAG money, so he didn't need any of the CARES money at this point. So, um, for this first application, my next one is due in October for August and September. So it's kind of a continual process on, on that. The FEMA, they don't, um, I'm trying to figure out what they pay for debris removal. And so that's kind of my next step on getting that figured out. But I need to first, uh, we need to figure out what our insurance pays for that and, um, our poor insurance adjuster that's, um, helping us is also working at a whole lot of schools. I think, um, he's working on around fifty-one schools. So, and, and let's face it, that seems to, that's the priority, trying to get those kids at least back in school and making those, making, making sure those facilities are safe. So, um, he's a busy guy. So that's all the fun.
I'm sorry. I just add to what Nan just said. Um, today was the deadline for, uh, the request for public assistance. Um, I, I did send out information on that a couple of days ago and then I had a few more sign up, um, that were eligible. So a couple more school districts. I, I haven't checked yet, uh, since eight o'clock this morning. I did check at six. I didn't see any more townships signed up. So I'm hoping that the townships that need that, um, will sign up yet today and, um, uh, yeah, there's, I mean, we've put out the information. Lisa's helped me quite a bit sending that out to townships. So, um, I always tell them if, if they're eligible, go ahead and sign up. If you decide that you don't need it, you can always withdraw. So, hopefully that will go well. And then the CARES Act, uh, kind of adding a little bit to that, we also are looking at if that will help us with some of the communication, um, things that have got damaged or destroyed, um, above and beyond what the insurance will take care of. So we're working with Rhonda on that and also with the Emergency Operations Center, uh, upgrade because it needed to go virtually for COVID and for the DRAESHO because of COVID. So we're working on trying to upgrade that with some, a grant that I have and then also hopefully supplement some CARES Act. So Nan's helping me on that also.
And, um, Kim, isn't the, um, FEMA public assistance, isn't that due tomorrow, the sixteenth? Because I think CARES is due today, the fifteenth, and FEMA public assistance is tomorrow. Unless I've got my dates backwards. And, and we can check on that. I did, um, try to apply for Washington Township Public Assistance last night and, um, that, um, when you have a new user, they have to do something on the federal side or on Iowa Homeland Security and I'm not sure we've gotten that information back yet. So there's, it may take a little bit longer for a township that's brand new and never applied for FEMA before. Just in case anyone asks you, I just wanted to kind of alert you to that.
We may have lost her.
I think we did.
I spoke to a couple of different townships that had questions and encouraged them to apply specifically for the debris removal from the cemetery.
Cemeteries is where we, the only spot we really have any, um, things in Washington Township.
So hopefully they have. And I only had two townships that had that situation.
I didn't.
That I spoke.
I didn't see any last night that had applied yet. So.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some big messes out there. All right. Is there anything else that would like to be brought up during the public forum?
Steve, were you gonna bring up?
I am, I am. I, I, I wanted to do a shout out here. I don't know if I have the, the complete story here. But we had a gentleman, uh, I believe it was Ri- Richard Kennely that, uh, found the flag that we had just put up, brand new, that morning on top of the courthouse or on the flagpole out front possibly. And, um, he, uh, found this flag and rescued it. And, uh, and I think he was the one that actually dried it out, maybe cleaned up a little bit and brought it back to the county. So, we thank Richard, uh, for, for doing this and we're probably going to put this back up in, at the future, future times. So, uh, again, thank you, Richard, to Richard and Connie Kennely for, uh, presenting this flag back to the county here the day after the, the day after the, uh, DRAESHO. So, that's all I have.
And properly folded.
And properly folded.
With all thirteen folds.
Yes, it is. If there's nothing else to bring before the board, uh, I would, uh, move for adjournment here. The next regular session is September 29th, 2020 at nine oh five A M. All business to be acted upon at this session should be under the recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, September 24th, 2020 at one o'clock P M. There being no further business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned at ten oh eight A M. Thank you all for, uh, participating.